Did you, okay, so before I make a similar mistake, Mr. Sweeney, did you have the benefit of having that? Information ahead of the meeting, did you say, did you see this information? You're muted, by the way, Mr. Sweeney.
Send the Google file with every.
I, yes.
All right, all right, so motions are made and seconded on the roll call, Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Bob Palagi is a yes. Okay. Uh, the next thing is lot releases, we'll take them in order. Forty-one Draper, so has that one been signed off by, as far as you know, Pam or Rob signed up by DPW?
Yes, this was a split of a lot, the front half of the lot is on Kingman Street, this is the back half of the lot. And the utilities, the only work in the street was utilities and that were, those were pulled off the street. And I have the inspection letter from DPW.
All right. Um, let's do these separately because I think they're going to have different results, so. Uh, some, let's see, lot releases require, yes, they do, they require a vote.
Yes.
Yes, they do, so Draper, let's.
They are not public hearings, but.
They require a vote, yes, no, you're right, okay, so let's take Draper, uh, motion, motion to accept, a motion to lot, release lot forty-one Draper, please.
I'll make a motion to release lot forty-one Draper.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded on the roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Bob Palagi is a yes. Okay, the second item is Woodland Park, Woodland Park, uh, lots twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two, and thirty-three, so there's eight.
I make a motion.
I think.
Make a motion to release lot, Woodland Park's lot twenty-six, twenty-seven.
We, um, thank you, we need some discussion.
Yeah, do we have to read into the log, this, this email we received?
Well, this is, this is the, this is the one, uh, if I may, uh, Larry, this is the one that we see. This is the one, if we just to quickly touch on the background here, that the, there was a neighborhood association that's been established up there and they've come to the planning board and to the mayor's office and to Rob Bay's office on different issues, there's been different, uh, how would you say, uh, situations of discontent there and they're represented by one spokesperson who did send that correspondence. There, there continues to be a lot of concern on the part of the neighbors on about the lack of performance and the lack of cooperation on the part of the developer. So, um, this, now I understand that, although I, I learned today that there's been money that's been posted for the, for the remaining work. But I still have concerns about releasing these lots because unless you have at least an adequate amount of money, I'm not suggesting that the developer might do this, but I mean, he could essentially walk away from this and with his, with his released lots and, and then you'd have no leverage, so.
Mr. Chair?
Myself personally, looking at the correspondence that was sent, we can certainly open us to a very quick discussion, I don't want to spend a lot of time with this. My suggestion to the board would be that we, that we take the, that we take the correspondence that was, that's been sent to the city, send it to the developer, the developer doesn't yet have it, and, and continue this item for a month and see what kind of response you get from the, from the developer. That's my thought, I'd open it up to anybody else's thoughts.
Pam was gonna mention something.
I must have missed that receipt of that, if you want to forward it to me, if it was in the Google files, I can't open those, so.
It was a separate email that went out to everybody, too. Pam, did you want to mention something?
I, I did, um, we have worked with this developer to secure this sum of money. Um, he has asked to change his method of surety, which is his right.
Yeah.
Um, we've received several estimates, but he worked, it's outstanding, to the road and some other issues, and all those were verified by DPW, we added a twenty percent contingency to that amount to make sure that the city was protected.
In other words, in other words, the monetary amount that you're holding exceeds the, the, the cost of the work to be done?
By twenty percent.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to know from the city's perspective. I kind of, in a way, feel slightly a little bit bad for the neighborhood there, once these lots are released and i- in the grand scheme of development, when you have eight lots, if the prices, price points that they're getting now, I'm not suggesting that the developer's going to do that. He hits that all of a sudden, how much, what's the, what's a dollar amount, Pam, that you're holding, thirty, thirty thousand?
Sixty thousand.
Oh, sixty thousand, all right, well, that up to the end.
Yes.
Okay, well, I mean, I made a suggestion, I'm, that's just, I'm just one member, but I made a suggestion that we, given the, given the number of times that that neighborhood has spoken out, contacted the mayor's office, I don't have to tell you, I mean, contacted Rob's office. I thought, give, give the, my suggestion, my thought was, give the developer a one month's cycle, a one month's chance to respond to that letter where it's the couple that was done by the spokesperson for the neighborhood, I thought did a pretty good job presenting that, but that's my thought. Uh, what, what do the others think about that?
Uh, Mr. Chair, it's Larry, um, I, I read the, I mean, I'm reading it now, but I read it anyways, and I took a drive up there myself a couple days ago after I saw the, the email. And, um, they, they, they do have a lot of, I think, legitimate complaints, um, although the developing is going on up there, I think there's three houses that are going up right now, um. You know, one of the things that stuck out to me, there used to be that, uh, there was a gate there off of Armistine going into the subdivision, it's no longer there. Um, they made mention of item number six here, there's an installed, some, one of the neighbors installed a ninety-six foot long fence on the land that they do not own. I can't verify whether they own that or they don't own it, but I think that's part and possible to the fact that there's really not a true homeowners association going on up there either, I think it's still kind of being handled by the developer, am I wrong in that?
It is.
Yeah, so.
It is still, the developer is still in charge in a homeowners association and the, we have been advised of the issue with the fence and, um, that's up to the property owner?
Right, that's more of a property ownership, own, yeah, I, that I understand, so, um, I don't know, I just, I, I think based on the number of, uh, responses we had last time around on this and seeing this now, um, I'm kind of on board with, you know, continuing this at least one more month and see how the developer responds and see if they can satisfy some of the the residents up there, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I'd agree with that, I mean, it just lets the developer know that there are, you know, some level of checks and balances in place and it's not going to get rubber stamped, he's got to, you know, take in the, uh, cons- of, of the neighbors and the butter, so, um, I like holding this off for another month as well.
I agree, uh, would someone like to make a motion to, first of all, alert the developer of the, of the, of the neighborhood's concerns? And postpone this or continue it for a month, please?
Right, motion to continue to alert developer on some of the issues needed, I don't know how else you want to, you know, title this, but motion to continue to next month?
You know, and alert the, and, and alert the developer, yeah?
Right.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, uh, let's see, vote on the roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Bob Palagi is a yes. Okay, last, last lot release item is two thirty-six West Chestnut Street, if you could fill us in on that one, Pam.
Um, Ryse, did you receive the check today?
Yes, I did, he's all set.
Okay, and it was for the amount we discussed? Okay, um, these are two houses that unfortunately were issued building permits without the lots being released.
Okay.
And, um, it was during the whole beginning of COVID and so the houses are partially up and then the permits were stopped.
But I, I'm pretty sure that during one of our planning board meetings and even in the tech meetings, we approved, right, we, they just didn't get.
Correct.
Right, so.
But they shouldn't have been issued a permit, so, um, at, at this point.
Do they have to go back and reapply with building department?
No.
No, the permits are just on hold.
Okay. They need to post, but you, what you just said, they're post maturity, right?
They have posted surety for the work that needs to.
Remains to be done.
Needs to grind and overlay the road.
Okay, and, and the amount of money that you have secured is at least, is sufficient to do the work?
Um, that was what his estimate said, and then again, um, we added twenty percent to that.
Okay. All right, well.
I, Ryse, how much was the check?
Ten thousand eight hundred.
So ten thousand eight, eleven thousand, uh, twenty percent, so you added another twenty.
That was the twenty percent. He's got a small patch of road that unfortunately, what he did, because he didn't read the plan, was, um, to put two patches in the road instead of grinding and overlaying, um, the length of the subdivision, the two houses, so that's the work that needs to be done. So it's, it's a small amount of work, but.
Right. And they know they have to do it, right, obviously?
He understands that now, yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Because, I mean, I drove by, you know, I, when I saw the address, I was like, lot release, but, I mean, the houses are up.
Correct, but he can't, his permits are on hold.
Okay. I don't really have any other questions with it, I think, you know, I think we should, my opinion, I, I'm going to say yes to a lot release.
Yeah, having, having no other issues there, I think, I think the base has been covered, um, so we're holding the, the appropriate amount of money for the lot release, so would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve lot release two thirty-six West Chestnut Street.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded on the roll call, vote, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
And Bob Palagi is a yes. So, first agenda item is.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, could I just go on record for a second, please?
Yes.
Um, certainly, I agree with what we did with Woodland Parks, but I did not receive that email, I, Ryse just forwarded it to me. Everyone was addressed except for me, so just to go on record, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
We did not send that email.
Mr. May?
Um, yes, I have a comment from, um, Councilor Nick Castro regarding the Thatcher Street project, she thought that the board had agreed to move this to the front of the agenda, um, does the board remember making that, uh, arrangement?
You know, I think you're right, I think we might have at the end of that meeting last week, because.
I don't remember that, but I, I don't know, I'm not a tourist of doing that, I don't remember that.
I do recall.
Yeah.
I don't remember giving it a position, but.
Yeah, because now it's number nine. Is there any issue with maybe going through that now, or no?
I don't. I don't, I don't have a particular problem with it, if you want to take it out of order. I assume by her comment, that's, he doesn't want to wait till the end of the agenda, I guess. I mean, it was the last thing added to the agenda, that's why it's there.
It's at the board's pleasure.
Um, I don't, I don't, are we ready to move on that one, do we have anything we need to, to discuss that one?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, well, let's move, then let's move, uh, nine to, into the first position, uh, again, I don't recall making any solid concession, but that's okay, so, uh, the next agenda item is site plan approval forty R, two twenty-three, two sixty-one Thatcher Street, uh, it's POUA Holdings. Um, this is the one that we had a second round of, had a special meeting on this, and then uh, the board made comments, it went back to, uh, I guess it went for one final round with, uh, peer review with, um, Beta, and then Beta, Beta has responded and that came in, that, their response was addressed as late as today, so that's where that stands, so, um, the, the, is the applicant on, or can you bring him on?
Uh, yes, I'm moving them over now. Uh, promote to panelist.
Will you make me a co-host so I can help you?
I have, you are.
Okay.
Bill, who else is on your team, please?
Hi, Rob, uh, we have, uh, I think Brian Kuchar, uh, Jay Simansky, uh, Jim Burke. Um, I think Jeff Dirk was, was going to be on. And then, uh, from the planning office, uh, perhaps Dan Rebenowitz and POUA office, so looks. And I will also reach out to people as well, if you don't, if there's anyone you don't see, if you can let me know, Rob.
Um, HW group, that's your engineer, isn't it?
That's the engineer, yes.
So will you be the, again, Mr. Grogan, good evening.
Good evening.
Will, will you be the spokesperson for this evening for this item?
Uh, I think Jim Burke would probably take the, the lead and then he'd, uh, let me know when it's my turn to, uh, to chime in.
All right.
If there are, if there are other attendees that were missing, please raise your hand, um, so we can move you over. Uh, if there are other panelists or, or other people part of the present, presentation team. I think we might have them all, but if you see other people that need to be moved, please let me know.
Yeah, I think we have everyone, uh, so I think we can proceed, uh, Rob.
Thank you, sir.
All right, good, good evening, Attorney Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I, I won't hold up the process, we, we are now here at, hopefully, the final portion of the hearing on the spot ER, and we are prepared to, uh, uh, move to close the public hearing, but before, uh, we, we did, we wanted to work with Beta uh, to formulate a couple of conditions, uh, that certainly were within uh, their purview and our agreement, and how we could move forward with a decision, uh, with some, uh, uh, functional, uh, conditions for this complicated project, so, uh, I'm going to let Bill take it from here, uh, and then hopefully, when we've, uh, reached that point, you can determine whether there are any other questions left open uh, for the board's consideration, if not, then I'm sure we'll assent to, uh, closing the public hearing, Bill?
That, thank you, Jim, yes, as, as Jim mentioned, uh, we worked with, uh, Brian, uh, Kuchar, uh, from Horsley Witten to respond to the uh, the comments, uh, from, uh, from the Beta group, I think we, uh, and, and Brian can, can provide probably a little bit more detail, but we addressed all of the comments with the, uh, uh, and agreed to, I believe, five conditions, uh, that would a- apply to the project, uh, you know, mostly relating to some additional approvals that would occur during construction, um, but, uh, but I think that we're all in agreement on, on those conditions, uh, between our team and with, uh, with the Beta group, uh, and believe that with that, everything has been closed out from the peer review side, uh, Brian, is that correct?
Yes, that is my understanding, Bill.
Great.
Okay, great, so, you, you, uh, Mr. Burke, Attorney Burke, you alluded to some, some other conditions or things that you thought uh, you might still be yet unresolved, did I understand that correctly?
No, I actually, I think Brian, uh, uh, you either have formulated with a letter from Beta or from us, I think there are five conditions that we think lead to the final questions that Beta had, and Brian, why don't you hop back on and identify the conditions for clarity for the board?
Sure, Jim, um, yeah, so that is correct, uh, in our discussions and review with Beta, um, these are conditions that, that they had suggested and, and then we had, uh, come up with a few more to address some of their, their comments, I'll just read them. Um, right now, um, the first condition would be that the roof drains be shown on the final as-built plan once construction is done, um, the second condition is the verification that adequate depth to groundwater is provided beneath, uh, the bio-retention area, uh, number one, prior to construction. The final, uh, the third condition is the final signed, uh, completed stormwater pollution prevention plan or SWIP be provided to and approved by the city prior to the start of construction. The fourth condition is an additional PVC monitoring pipe be installed in the location of infiltration basin one, to verify that adequate depth to groundwater is provided prior to construction. And the last and fifth condition is an agent of the city is to observe native soils after excavation for infiltration systems to verify design assumptions for soil texture and separation to groundwater elevations.
All right, so it sounds like, it sounds like Beta's concerns and the plan, the concerns that the planning board uh, gave rise to at the last meeting have been addressed. Uh, any other comments in the part of, uh, the board members? Okay, so I think, I think we're up to speed with those items, um, Mr. May, you and I discussed briefly about, um, you know, the concept of the set aside, and, uh, I think, I think Attorney, I mean, uh, Councilor Nick Castro, uh, outlined for us at the last meeting what that, what those monies were for and so forth, but I think I was under misunderstanding that that bulk of money was going to go to the detriment of the, of the project once it was built, but that's going to the city, so.
Uh, yes, if, if I could address that question, the money that, uh, Councilor Nick Castro was talking about, the hundred thousand dollars is money from the state for our participation in the smart growth zoning program. It is not money from the developer for mitigation. Um, the developer has, um, proposed to add to that pot um, in their communications, which has been shared with the board, they are, uh, proposing to, uh, sub, uh, provide an additional five thousand dollars, uh, for potential off-site mitigation. And, um, and, and you remember from our conversation this morning, or this afternoon, Mr. Chairman, um, we didn't think five thousand dollars bought a whole heck of a lot.
No, it doesn't.
But, um, as you saw from the plans that have been submitted, uh, the applicant has addressed the play area that, um, uh, Tony, uh, Gonzalez has, Gonzalez has talked about. Um, and, um, the board has discussed and, and, uh, thought needed in the project, so, um, the money then that was going to be set aside for playground is is being used, um, there, by, by their improvement, so, um, the question is how much should we have available for off-site mitigation, should, uh, the issue arise? Um, you and I talked potentially about a, a bond that, um, uh, two years after the certificate of occupancy is issued, if that money is not needed, it would go back to the developer. Um, and, and that is, um, uh, one of the options that, that you have as a board to discuss.
And what, what dollar, what dollar amount, what monetary amount did, did we have in mind?
Uh, you and I talked about thirty thousand dollars as a bond, um, but, again, that's up to the board to discuss, but that money should be used before the state money that is currently set aside.
And again, to be clear, if that money, that thirty thousand dollar set aside, uh, is that, is that strictly limited to, 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 to site improvement, is that what we're saying?
I think it would be off-site improvement, traffic mitigation.
Oh, I see, okay.
As opposed to other, uh, you know, park or open space or recreational activities.
All right, comments from the part of the board on this concept?
I, I like it, I'm in agreement.
Uh, any comments on the part of the developer or through, through their council, any comments, Mr. Burke, Attorney Burke on Mr. Grogan?
I certainly yield to Bill Grogan, uh, i- in terms of the, uh, the, the bond, uh, it, uh, it doesn't have to be a cash bond, I assume, it could be, uh, a fidelity bond, uh, and, uh, in terms of the utilization, uh, I, I, it would be under the supervision of, uh, probably someone like Mr. May to make sure that we, we have some, uh, commonality and understanding of what the use is and that it's, uh, related to the project area rather than something that might be outside of the project area.
I, I would include the, uh, DPW commissioner in that also.
But, uh, he always sounds good to us. But that's Mr. Grogan's call.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I think we're, we're certainly o- open to that, I think the, you know, we obviously want to make sure that, uh, you know, if there are mitigation measures that need to, uh, occur, I think, as we outlined in the uh, the memo that was prepared by Van Ass, that we're prepared to undertake those, I think we obviously just want to make sure that there's an opportunity for us to, you know, to, to review and evaluate, uh, those, and so that, you know, there's an open process and dialogue to really determine what those, uh, impacts are, and so that we can reach agreement that y- yes, these are impacts and yes, these, you know, do necessitate, uh, the use of some measures to be put in place.
All right, um, all right, it sounds like we are we have an agreement, I guess, in concept, um, again, any other comments or concerns on the part of the board? Uh, I want to, would you help with the language, assuming that someone's going to make a, a, a motion to go forward with the project, Mr. May? The portion of the, the portion of the motion that wants to, that wants to acknowledge the thirty thousand dollar bond, I don't want to misspeak, would you assist with the language for that portion of the motion?
Um, I, I would say that, that we, we would move, that we, um, approve the plans, uh, before us, um, incorporating the five conditions from the, um, Beta report and, uh, that a bond of thirty thousand dollars be held by the city to make necessary off-site traffic improvement with, um, in coordination with the developer. And should those funds not be used, the bond shall be returned.
You know, would you, what timeframe did you put on it, Mr. May?
Two years, sorry.
Within three years of the last certificate.
Of the C of O, yes.
Well, that was a lot for any member to, uh, to grasp, but, uh, would someone like to take a crack at that motion?
So I'll make a motion to approve the plan incorporating the five.
Tony, can I just ask, ask you also, when you approve this, it's the special conditions from Beta and the standard City of Brockton conditions.
All right.
I got it, wait on that.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the plan before us incorporating the five conditions from Beta, the standard conditions from the City of Brockton. Um, also, the bond of thirty thousand held by the city to work with the traffic, off-site traffic improvements with the developer, if not used within two years, return to the developer.
After the last certificate of occupancy is issued.
The last certificate of occupancy is issued.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, uh, motion, I mean, on the roll call, vote, um.
And, and just FYI, Mr. Sweeney cannot vote on this one. And you need all four of the other board members voting in the affirmative.
Right, Mr. Sweeney is our new member, so he has not been a party to all of these negotiations, I understand that, so, on the roll call. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
Bob Palagi is a yes. So it looks like we have an agreement, it's been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, but. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, but a long road, but we appreciate all the work the planning board has done along with the Councilon Castro and Thompson.
Yep, and thank you for your patience and your indulgence. We really, really appreciate your professionalism, you're collectively quite a, quite a developmental, developmental team that we don't see that often, so thank you to all of you gentlemen, have a good evening.
Great, thank you very much.
All right. So again, back on schedule, the first, the first item withdrawn by ninety eight, that was returned to ZBA five ninety eight Offene Street. Second agenda item was a permissioner turn to ZBA, that's sixty eight to seventy Field Street. That has been continued to, that was Marie Lorchette, that's been continued to the fourth. The third agenda item is permission to the return to ZBA sixteen Albert Avenue. The denial was November the tenth, twenty twenty, Nelson Montero. Good evening, are those representatives on?
Nelson, is your attorney there?
Yes, she is.
Can you identify her, please? I have a razor hand or something?
I could tell it, our name is Sylvia Katsinis. I mean, we're, we're in different locations.
Right, but we can see who's logged in and.
Well, I mean, if you wanted to raise.
Oh, I got her, never mind, I see her.
You found her?
I just saw her.
Wait a minute, where'd you just go?
I just, I just.
Yeah, she's on, I see her on.
There, she's been moved.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Would the two of you be able to un, or turn your video on? Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we're set.
Okay, thank you, Mr. May, all right, good evening. Petitioners, counsel, if you want to give us, we, we're in receipt of all of the documentation that was sent in. If you want to just give us a brief overview, that would be appreciated. Just a, just a brief overview and then we have, we have some comments, you're muted right now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, my name again is Sylvia Katsinis and I represent Zubia LLC, the owner of the property sixteen Albert Avenue. Last October, Mr. Montero, the manager of the LLC filed a petition with the Brockton zoning Board of Appeals for variance to convert sixteen Albert Avenue from a single to a two-family residence. That decision, there was a hearing on November tenth, as the board is aware, at which time the petition was denied. Zubia timely filed an appeal with the Plymouth Superior Court, which is presently pending. And I do emphasize that we're reserving our rights under that appeal and still maintaining that section sixteen of chapter forty-eight does not apply here tonight. However, in, we do, if we do have a rehearing before the ZBA while the appeal is pending, that might be, give us an opportunity to resolve the outstanding issues and dismiss the appeal. So having said that, I proceed with the merits.
Could you, not to interrupt you, but could you tell me what the essence, just briefly, what the essence of chapter sixteen forty-eight is, please?
Yes, sixteen, section sixteen, that provides, that in essence puts somebody in the penalty box for two years following an unfavorable decision by somebody like the, the ZBA. That they cannot go back to the ZBA without first going through, in this case, the planning board.
Yes.
Getting, I, 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 I think you understand what, what that is.
We're aware of that, I thought it, I thought it was tied to the, to the Superior Courts. I thought section sixteen was tied to the Superior Courts' appeal action.
Well, in a way it is because section sixteen applies only to a final unfavorable, but unfavorable decision.
I see.
Given the pending action, the, the appeal, that decision from the ZBA is technically not final. However, again, I say that if we were to get back before the ZBA, I think we can overcome some of the hurdles that were there to begin with.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
So the ZBA question, in this decision, the ZBA questioned the number of bedrooms in the proposed conversion. The original plans showed a total of eleven bedrooms. And in response to that concern, Mr. Montero has revised the plans, reducing the number of bedrooms from eleven to eight for the two units now, we're talking about two units. So that would be four bedrooms per apartment, which is certainly not unreasonable or excessive. Also, the ZBA raised an issue regarding the height of the structure once it has been amended. And on the original plans, it showed the height as being as thirty-seven feet. The zoning limits the height to thirty-five feet. So in the revised plans that are before the board, we have lowered the height to thirty-five feet so that it does comply with the zoning. Also, although the, the board did not specifically address this in its decision, there were two large rooms that were going to be put in the attic. In other words, part of the attic was going to be finished. And those rooms are labeled as bonus rooms on, on the plans before you. One of the rooms was seventeen feet by twenty-four feet and the other was fifteen feet by twenty-four feet. So, so we're talking about approximately seven hundred and seventy square feet. Zubia has eliminated those rooms, so, so the attic will not be finished. So the applicant has made substantial changes to the plans that were denied by the, the ZBA. Also, the ZBA found that there was that the petitioner had not shown hardship. And and although they made that finding, there is in fact hardship and that hardship arises from, out of the circumstances relating to the structure of the house. The original portion of the house was built around nineteen twenty and it's a classic colonial design. It's two stories with a basement and an attic, has a pitch roof. And subsequently, years ago, one of the prior owners added an addition to the back of the house. That addition is a single-story unit with a flat roof and it's built on a slab, there is no basement under there. Still later, somebody else added a second addition. They put that on the back of the, the first addition. That addition is one and a half stories high. And again, it sits on a slab, there's no basement beneath it. And to make matters worse, and I'll get to it in a minute, the two slabs are in different levels, there's three to four feet difference between the two of them. So and, and I'll get to it in a minute, how that, that difference in, in the levels causes a real problem. The original portion of the house, it's heated by gas. And, and that gas heat extends to a portion of the first addition, but not the entire first addition. And the reason is that they cannot extend the gas lines underneath the slabs to heat the, the remainder of the first addition and the entire second addition.
I don't mean to, unfortunately, we missed, I don't know, speaking for myself, we, I missed a good portion of your presentation, I'm sorry. I don't know if anybody else did. I, I hate, I, I lost, I dropped out when you, when you were explaining how he had modified the, the plans from the eleven to the eight bedroom, I, I, did anybody else miss any of that?
Well, I.
No.
No. No, I think you're the only one, Bob.
Then proceed, I'm familiar enough with it, so.
All right, okay. So now, the, the original portion of the house is heated with gas. And however, the rest of the house that's, that's built on the slab is heated by electric, electricity. And needless to say, electricity is pretty costly and not all that efficient. So the occupants are constantly complaining that the house is too cold in the winter and too hot in the summer. It's also, there's also air conditioning there. So, so what Mr. Montero would like to do is replace that old heating system and the old conditioner with gas. And in order to do that, he would have to put a second story over the first story addition and, and, and then an attic over that. So doing that, that way he can run the pipes from the basement, run the, the, the gas line from the basement up to the attic, run it across the attic and down to the slab portions of the house. And also, what he would do is put new air conditioning, the air conditioning apparatus in the attic. However, adding a, a second story and the attic is going to cost between a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. And that just is economically unfeasible for a single-family home. So that is a, a literal enforcement of the zoning laws would cause him a financial hardship. And that's why we request the variance.
Okay. Are you, all right, thank you. All right, I have a couple of concerns. As we know, generally the hardships, chapter forty-eight, section six, I think it is, it has to do with land shape, soils and topography and in a literal, a literal enforcement, I mean, he's able to use the property. It's not like he's not able to use the property, he's able to use the property. All, all of the things that you've mentioned, certainly challenges to the property, but those are, those are hardships that, I'm not sure that, well, I don't want to speak for the zoning, but those are not hardships that the, that the, that the zoning board would generally take into consideration when considering such a large development on, on, in an I one C, single-family zone. You, 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 one of the, one of the things that the, I read the zoning board's decision and one of the things that they, that they highlighted was that the grant of a variance would derogate from the intent of the zoning as it applies to that neighborhood. So I began to get curious, how many homes, if any, in that neighborhood are of a multifamily nature? You're asking for relief from the zoning board of appeals to make this into a rather large, not a two-family, but a rather large, when you have a total of eight bedrooms, a rather large two-family home in what is a single-family zone? And I can't tell, I, I'll, I'll be quite frank with you, I, I don't think that your plot plan helps your cause at all because it doesn't, it doesn't tell me anything about what's going on in the grand neighborhood. I don't know how close the house on the left-hand side is. I, I don't know, there's nothing that your plot plan tells me about what's going on in the grand neighborhood. Not when you want, not when your proposal is asking to change a single-family a lot into, into, into a two-family, I mean, your, your hardship's notwithstanding. The other concerns I've got is that when you put this proposed addition, you also need relief from minimum side yard, you're in a single-family zone, I one C. You need minimum fifteen foot on side yard, you haven't mentioned that. You would be violating zoning in two places, the side yard, the dimensional zoning. The other concern I've got is the city records show in your brief states that the, that the house, that the lot that the house is on is some sixty-seven hundred feet. So that would suggest to me that does, does the applicant actually own, does he have title to the two properties?
He does.
Okay, are they in the same name of ownership?
I believe they are, but in any event, he, he does have control over both properties.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't, what did we look at there, Mr. May? Did we look at the fact that he doesn't, it does, they're not in the, either not in the same name or they're, I mean, it's an inconsistency that if I was sitting on the Board of Appeals on this case, those are the concerns that I would have.
The concern that we discussed this afternoon is that they are two existing lots of record and the, the vacant lot could be sold off and, and developed, leaving very little space for the other two families. And you had recommended that they be combined.
Yes, I think all they need to be combined because you're going to need, because if you don't, if you don't combine them to start with, you're going to exceed, you're going to need a lot of relief from this thing. You're going, if you don't combine those lots and that, and that, and that addition lives on this tiny lot, the other thing you're going to need relief from is maximum lot coverage. You're, you're going to grossly exceed maximum lot coverage. So you need, you need to combine the two lots and, and in my opinion, you need to show in a general sort of a way what's going on in the neighborhood so that we as a planning board and the members of the zoning board of appeals can get a little bit more comfortable with the fact that your proposal, if it's granted, doesn't derogate from the intent of the zoning as it was, as it applies to that neighborhood.
I would like to.
Those are my concerns, but let me open up to the, the other members of the planning board, do you have any other concerns, board members?
Can we ask the applicant? I, I'm pretty sure he, from what I'm seeing, as far as the assessors is concerned, is that both lots are under the same ownership. Don't know if that helped you, Bob, but I, I believe that owns both lots. I, I don't think there would be any intent to try to sell that off and just note it as an accessory land, piece of land. I don't think you can do anything else with it, but maybe the applicant can speak to that or his attorney.
Nelson, do you want to take that?
I'd like to answer a question that you raised earlier, Mr. Pelagi, about the neighborhood, about there are the multifamilies in, in the area. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the area, if you've been there.
No, I haven't, and I, and I, I'm supposed to, if I'm looking this, either, either as a member of the zoning board or member of the planning board, I'm sup, I'm supposed to, when you're proposing something like changing the use in the district, I mean, it's helpful to give the voting member sort of an idea or the flavor of what's going on in the neighborhood and your, your plot plan or site plan falls woefully short of doing that.
Well, just to fill in a little bit, the house directly across the street is a two-family house.
How do I know that?
You can look it up in city records.
I shouldn't have to look it up, Mr. Montero, I got enough stuff to do. That's, you, that's, that's your obligation, you're the one that, you're the petitioner, you're the one that's presenting the project, I don't need a home, I don't need a homework assignment.
Well, let me, let me tell you a little bit more about, I mean, if you look at Quarter Street and Center Street, all around the places, you got multifamily homes.
Okay, fair enough, but I don't know that.
Well, I, I'm surprised that you don't know that. I'm surprised, I am surprised that you're in the city planning office and you do not know that information.
Excuse, excuse me, can I, can we get a little respect here, calm down, please be respectful, Mr. Montero, thank you.
I mean, listen, I, I, I mean, I'm not raising my voice, am I?
No, but you're, you're, you're being, you're being a condescending and we need to avoid that, please, so.
Well, 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 he's being condescending too. He's telling me that I should be doing that homework, you should be doing your homework.
All right, well.
If I may interject, I, I do call to the board's attention that there were several letters of approval for this project from the neighbors. That, that goes to show that this is not going to derogate from, from the neighborhood, but it's going to be, it's going to enhance the neighborhood. What's on there now, quite frankly, is a monstrosity. And, and what Mr. Montero is trying to do is make it into a much more attractive building. And the neighbors see that, that, that they, they can appreciate that. It's also going to provide, you know, a much-needed housing to, to a family. So, so there are a lot of advantages for, for what we're asking here.
Well, I would like to see myself, I would like to see a plan that, that what, what is going on in the neighborhood, that's not unusual. I mean, that's what I'm, what I'm suggesting to you is not unusual.
Mr. Palagi, I'd just like to add one more thing, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
So that you know, the building that we're proposing, we're not changing the footprint of the building at all. You said something about whatever's to the side, the fifteen feet, we're not changing the footprint of the building at all, we're just going up on it.
That's right, but you're making, you can't do that, your, as your attorney can probably tell you, the original building footprint is, is, is grandfathered, but when you, when you put something today, you, you can't make, you can't make a non-conforming situation more non-conforming, and that's what you're doing by putting a second addition, you can't do that. You would need, you need relief from side yard setback, which you didn't ask for. And if you don't combine the two lots, you need relief from lot coverage, although I don't, I don't know that you own the two lots, so you're telling me that you do, so. I, I think your, I think your proposal, I'm not going to say your proposal is a bad one, I think that your, I think that your documents are weak, that's all, I think your documents are lacking.
Well, I, I'm sorry, but I gave you guys everything you asked me for the hearing. If, if you had asked me for more things, I would have been more happy to provide anything else you needed. But what you asked, I provided. And I'm not sure about this conforming, but I don't see why I need more relief if I'm going over on the existing footprint.
Okay, well, I don't want to spend too much more time with that, the minimum side yard in an I-1C is fifteen feet. You're proposing a second story at seven and a half feet.
I'm sorry?
You're proposing a second story at, at seven and a half foot offset and you're making a more, you're making the non-conforming use more non-conforming.
I'm sorry, but I'm not following you. If I, if I'm going on top of what's existing there already, how is that changing anything? I'm going up, not to the, not sideways.
But that's right, but you can't, but you can't enter into that space unless you get relief from side yard. Your attorney, I think, can explain that to you at another time. Did any of the board members have any comments? What I would like to see, what I would like to see is I'd like to see the two lots combined into a plan. And I would like to see, I would like to see the area, just the general area, I'm not talking about doing a whole neighborhood survey. I would like to see just the immediate, maybe one or two properties, just, just some sort of an explanation, one or two properties on either side and maybe to the rear, what the, what the general use is, if this whole area is I-1C, that's what I would like to see, but.
So would you like some pictures and video, what would that do, what, what do you mean?
Well, I mean, I would like to see a more comprehensive site plan, a more comprehensive plan that, that helps this board and that will help the, and that will help the zoning board of appeals make a decision, because I'm sure you have a copy of the zoning board's decision, and they listed a number of concerns that they had, one of which was that the dwelling, if it was approved, would derogate from the intent of the zoning bylaws in an I-1C zone. So you did take care of the height, I appreciate that, and then you did, I don't, I can't speak to the zoning board, you had, you were looking for eleven bedrooms and you reduced that to eight, I don't know, I can't speak to the zoning board, but I would like to see. They also said that you didn't have, that you didn't demonstrate a hardship, a hardship that's, that's described in chapter forty-eight, I think it's six, maybe six or ten, I think it's chapter six. But, and you, and the hardships that I heard tonight, with all due respect, they're not hardships that you would base a variance on, but.
If I may, if I may be heard on that point, a hardship also pertains to the structure, it's not limited to the soil, to the land. The, 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 uh, chapter very, the section very specifically relates to circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape or to top, fog, topography of such land or structures. So it can vary, those, the hardship can very well arise from the structure itself, not from the land.
Okay.
That is a new one on me.
Yeah, I didn't see that, I didn't, that's, I've never heard that one.
I think most of the cases that come up do involve the land, but, but that, but the word structure is, is very prominent in this, in this section.
Well, that would remain to be, what I would like to see is, I'd still like to see a general, a general concept of what's going on in the, in the neighborhood. Certainly, certainly, I don't know if the house to the immediately left of this is, because it's an old building and it's a grandfathered building, I don't know if it's right up against that property line, I have no idea. So I think we've worked this enough, I'd like to ask someone to, if there's no other discussion on the part of the board, I would like to see a more expansive site plan, I think it would be beneficial to us, I think it would be beneficial for the zoning board to, to make a decision. I think, myself personally, I think there was a few issues that they did address, but I don't, I think that there was a, a few of the issues here that have yet to be addressed, but for myself, I'd like to see a little bit more explanation in the part of a, a, an engineer or a surveyor's site plan as to the location of the buildings in the immediate area and how they're being used.
I, I would agree with that and to combine those two lots.
I think that's key, that's, it may be in the same ownership with those two, and how would you do that? You'd, you'd draw a Form A plan or you're actually, I guess you could do it with, I think you could do it with an eighty-one X. Although you can't, I don't know that, maybe you can't, because you've got the internal lot line there. Yeah, you'd have to do a Form A, I think. And those are not, those are not excessive requests by any means. So you'd need, you would need to combine those two lots on the, using, utilizing a plan, a recorded plan to make them into one lot, record that, and then, and then show, just to, just be a little bit more expansive about what's going on in the general neighborhood.
So do we propose?
You would, you would continue this.
I think you could continue it, yeah, I think that's reasonable.
If the board was to undertake Mr. Palagi's recommendation.
Any public comments on this? Is a return to ZB.
Yeah. Uh, that's right, too, is there any, do we have anybody that wants to be heard, Rob?
Hang on, Mr. Chairman. If anybody would like to address the board on this issue, please signify by using the raise hand emoji at the bottom of your screen, if you hover over the bottom of the screen, you'll see the menu bar pop up. And I am not seeing anyone raising their hands, Mr. Palagi.
All right, thank you, all right, well, hearing none, if someone wants to make a motion, I, I shared my comments, if anybody else has any other comments, I would like to make a motion. So be it.
So I'll make a motion to continue this to see a more comprehensive site plan of the area and for the petitioner to consider combining those two lots.
Yeah, we need to combine those on a Form A plan and record the plan.
Yes.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded.
No, seconded, somebody has seconded.
Second. Second.
Oh, it's seconded.
Okay. All right, thank you, motions are made and seconded. Vote on the roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Bob Palagi is a yes. Thank you, thank you very much for your attendance.
Thank you.
All right, next agenda item is.
Um, it's the amendment five eighty-six Montello.
All right, thank you.
Is it just Scott or is there anybody else joining Scott?
I believe it is just me, Mr. May.
Oh, poor you.
It's all right.
Mr. Farrier.
Good evening, Mr. Palagi. Good evening, board members, Scott Farrier from Homegrown Engineering, representing Gen Three Rail T LLC, property at five eighty, five sixty-eight Montello Street, the Nicoli Oil Property. We had a site plan before you folks last March that was approved. And the site plan had a sixty-by-one-hundred-twenty-foot warehouse building and a sixty-by-sixty office building. During construction, the Nicolies decided that the sixty-by-sixty office building was bigger than they really needed and they decided to go with a thirty-by-sixty office building. In doing that, we were also able to eliminate one of the three entrances curb cuts that we had out onto Montello Street. So we eliminated what was proposed to be the middle curb cut. It just went straight across the parking lot, added some green space as opposed to the, the twenty-four-foot opening. The issue that we have is, there's no method in the planning board regulations for an amended plan or any kind of administrative approval, even though it's such, it's a minor change and actually a reduction in scope. We still had to file for this amendment to you folks to have you approve the, the change in plan, so. Again, it's two small changes, both of which kind of decrease the, the footprint and the impervious footprint on the property.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Farrier, any, any comments on the part of the board? Any comments on the part of planning department? I think it was just a very minor change. Public hearing, so is there any, anybody want, want to be heard there, Mr. May?
If anybody would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. So you can be recognized, and I have not had anyone raise their hand.
Wonderful, all right, we'll close that portion of the hearing, all right, if there's no no other comments or concerns, I don't have any concerns or issues with this, so if someone would like to make a motion to approve the amendment to the site plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the site plan.
Five sixty-eight Montello, second please.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded, vote on the roll call. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
And Bob Palagi is a yes, thank you, Mr. Farrier.
Thanks, folks, see you soon.
Thank you. All right, next agenda item, site plan approval, nine forty-four Warren Avenue, residential units, that's ET Engineering.
Azu, is anybody else with you? Is your client there?
Uh, yes. Yes, I am here with my client, Steve Torrey.
Oh, he's with you, okay.
Yes, that's why we're both wearing masks.
I can only see you.
Really?
Oh, there he is. Hi, Steve.
And I'm not sure if Cheney McCloskey will be able to join. He was not feeling very well, and so he.
I don't see him on, so.
So basically, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you for allowing us to speak with you this evening. Basically, this is a site plan for construction of a building, a three-unit building on an existing land. And we went through a tech review last month and and we received certain comments through the tech review process. And we addressed those and we submitted a correspondence that addressed the comments that we received. And we've, we have onsite water, we're actually proposing a hydrant as well as a one-way circulation, a one-way entrance and a one-way exit. Through the project, we have adequate drainage and we have adequate onsite parking. And so we are looking that to receive your blessing so that we can go to work before contractors get too busy. And that is the extent of my discussion, Mr. Chairman, if you, thank you, Bob, Rob, for sharing, you're a good man. Makes our life a lot easier. So as you can see, the blue fruit, the blue highlight shows the proposed three-unit building. And then in, in a little bit dark gray color is the parking area along with the drainage. And on the southeast, on the southeast side of that, Rob, if you can, yeah, on the south, southerly end of the project will be exit, exit only. And then where you have that little peninsula halfway in the middle of the property and next to the button line where we have the store, how, on the left, right there will be the entrance only. One of the comments that we received was, we had proposed the dumpster right about halfway on the easterly line of the property. Right where it says, next to where we have the zoning data. And the Board of Health and the Fire Department made some comments to that effect. And so we have relocated that to the southeast corner of the property. And, and we think, well, we have a clean descent project and would like your acquisitions in approving and accepting the site plan.
I, thank you, Azu, I had one question for you. So, Rob, could you drop the screen down a little bit so I can see the top more than, okay. During the construction, Azu, where are you, where are you, your construction support vehicles, where are they coming in and out of?
So they're going to come in, Mr. Chairman, on the, you see where there's a little dimple on the property? Where it's all like a U-shape to your, yeah, right there.
Yes.
It's going to be our entrance.
Okay, that's fair enough, the only thing, the only thing that I saw when I reviewed this, Azu, is that, is that especially on Warren Avenue, you need a stabilized construction exit and you desperately need one there, and I don't see one. I think it maybe it's just an oversight, but you should have one of that in the detail on the plan. Do you have it on there, but I don't see it, I'm sorry?
Can I, may, 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 may I ask you to repeat what you just said, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, a stabilized construction exit during construction, you desperately need that.
So, so the area that we have are the entrance and the exit from the property. Those are paved, Mr. Chairman. Those are stable, stable surfaces, when I'm talking, there's not going to be any excavation at the entrance or the exit.
Oh, I see, so if the, does, is that length, I, I can only ask you then. So obviously, the area where the proposed building is going, is going to be disturbed area, but when the trucks or the vehicles get on to that, that stretch of paved surface as you're, as you're, as you're referring, is that enough to clean the, clean the vehicle, the, the tires of the vehicles, Azu?
Yes, sir, because you're talking of a, a length, a distance of more than a hundred feet that are traveling southerly and then turning westerly to, westerly to exit. So that's over, that's over at least two hundred feet.
Okay, because if there's any tracking, I'm sure you'll know that, you know, if there's any significant tracking, I mean, I'm, I'm I'm sure that'll get the attention of DPW, but that was the only.
I don't expect that, Mr. Chairman, for the simple reason, if you look at my, if you look at the test fit data, the material there is very gran, very granular.
Okay.
Unlike our, if you, if we had a lot of silt, loamy material.
Yes, it would track, it would track more, yes.
Exactly, but the, the material that I observed is very granular and coarse. So you're not going to get that type of tracking, but Mr. Terry has done an incredible job in the, in the city of champions, and I think he would have, he, he, he builds very clean projects. He would have, uh, he, he, he builds very clean projects and. And if that, if that were to be a concern during construction, he would, uh, move very quickly to address that. I cannot.
Well, I think. Thank you for that explanation. Uh, do any of the board members have any concerns or questions?
I don't have any questions. Looks pretty good to me.
All right, uh, Rob, do you have anybody that wants to speak?
Uh, excuse me, um, Mr. Chair, Azu. I see something about, um, planning and economic development. Wanting you to keep the existing entrance and exits so you don't confuse the neighbors. Did you agree to that or change that or?
Okay, okay. That's what I want, but here is the, uh, in terms of traffic operations. We have a store, it makes more sense, uh, Rob, if you wouldn't mind, uh, bringing that. Okay, so if you look at, uh, if you look at our, right, the abundant land. There is a store right there. That's a building, but yeah, so if you try to exit from, in that direction. That blocks your line of sight. You almost have to go all the way into the street to, uh, see oncoming vehicles. So it makes much more better sense to have that as entry only. purely for safety consideration so that the, the southerly driveway that we wanna use for exit, uh, for, um. Exit provides a better line of sight. Uh, but if, if the preference is to switch them around, we will do that, but I think. Uh, safety, safety auto will prevail in this instant.
Yeah, that, that, that makes sense.
I was gonna say the department can live with that, uh, provided that, you know, you, you add some more, um, signage.
Yes.
Uh, inside so that the neighbors don't get lost in the middle of the night.
Yes, sir. And we are, we are proposing, we are proposing a couple of signs. Right where, right near the dumpster, you can see a sign that we have there. And then, and then there were, at the transition between the new construction and the existing, we also have signage there as well.
Okay.
And we propose to, uh, put a paint, uh, there's, uh, um. Our plastic, uh, line and paints on the ground as well to provide additional, additional, additional visual effect.
Thank you.
Uh, any other comments or concerns on the part of the board? I don't think we had anybody in the public arena. Correct, Mr. May?
Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on this project? If so, please, uh, indicate by raising your hand. Uh, using the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. And I do not see anyone raising their hand, sir.
All right. Thank you for that. Uh, well, I think, uh, if there are no other, no other questions, comments or concerns, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve site plan approval, nine forty-four Warren Avenue.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, with the condition of adding the signage for the entrance and exit, as Mr. May said.
With the condition of adding the signage.
Thank you for that.
As noted. Thank you, Tony.
Okay, uh, vote on the roll call. We have a motion made and seconded to approve. Subject to the signage, vote on the roll call. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
And Bob Palagi is a yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, uh, next is number six in site plan approval, thirty Intevale Street. It's a mixed use, Jacob Driscoll Engineering.
Wrong engineer.
There it is.
Throw Scott out of there.
Yeah, I moved Greg. I don't know if his client is there, though.
Greg, is your client there?
I'm not sure if he's on or not. It'll be Harrison Bonner.
Yeah, I don't see him. So, okay.
Yeah.
Was he coming on with you, Mr. Driscoll? Or did you feel comfortable proceeding?
Uh, I can proceed. Um.
Please do.
If you're on Harrison, go ahead, raise your hands, let them know you're here.
I don't see him anywhere.
There's only one person that's not identified and that's a telephone number, too.
Is it a two-five-two number?
No.
All righty, so Greg Driscoll, uh, Jacob Driscoll Engineering here tonight, uh, representing. Thirty Intevale Braxton Mass LLC, uh, which is Harrison Bonner now, uh. For, um, the proposed project that they are, are doing over Intevale Street. So this project, they received, uh, variance in twenty nineteen. Uh, for a use variance, um, to put residential in the, we see one zone. And then, well, this was the previous applicant and then since then, um. We went to tech review, we were on our way to, to you guys about a year ago, uh, and then the previous applicant decided to go back to zoning again. Uh, to get a variance for adding more units that required a variance from parking. And, uh, in height for like nine inches. So those were both granted. Uh, we went back to tech review this past, uh, November. And we have been through GOCOM, um, closed that meeting hour a few weeks ago. They issued a order of conditions and an hour before. You find folks, so, um. What the applicant is looking to do is this, uh, existing vacant building at thirty Intevale Street, which was previously a buyer tavern. Um, it's been vacant for some time. Um. They would like to build an addition off of the back of the building. And add a floor to it, so it'll be three stories. And, um, convert it to residential use. So it'll be five apartments on each floor. Total of fifty apartments in the building, um. And. Yeah, it's shown right there. Um, currently, the existing property is most, pretty much all paved. I think Rob's looking to bring up the site plan.
Yeah, I am.
So located at thirty Intevale Street, just north intersection of Am Street, uh, the Shoe City Tavern is located directly south of this building. Um. And we are in the neighborhood commercial C-one zone. Inside is about twenty-two thousand square feet and. As I mentioned, contains an existing building that is currently unoccupied. And as you can see, if you go up to that last plan, the existing conditions plan, they can see that it's all paved, all that gray is pavement. And on the next sheet, you'll see the proposed plan, proposed layout plan. And all that pavement goes away. The gray shaded area is the new parking lot. All the other areas, um, which you see later on, on the, um, landscape plan, uh, will be all grass and. Landscape and everything. Uh, we have a new fence. Around the area where Rob's gonna point right now. Uh, the, the property line goes right up to the abutting building, so. They're going to put fence along there, have lawn area and. Off the parking lot, those are gonna be patios and, um, balconies. The new parking lot will be, uh, handicapped accessible spaces. We have. Could you zoom in on the, um, zoning table real quick?
On the zoning table?
Yeah. So, uh. As I mentioned, uh, thirty spaces are required, but we've got a variance up to twenty spaces. Uh, there are also five spaces located out on the street, which while not owned by the building, uh, available for visitors and. And residents of the, uh, of the building, since on-street parking is allowed in the area. Site lighting will be in the form of, uh, wall packs mounted to the building, which is provide a lighting plan and from. From the architect. So currently this site, as I mentioned, is all paved. Uh, there is no real, there's no, actually, I'll speak to this right now. This is the landscape plan. So this is all the green space that we're adding to the, to the project. Uh, so it reduced runoff by quite a bit, uh, just by adding on that green space and off the back of the parking lot there where. It's a little back out areas. That is a stone diaphragm and then, uh, if you look at the grading plan, you'll, you'll see that there is a vegetated filter strip and a swell. And off the back of the building, there is a infiltration trench. Um, to maximize the amount of infiltration coming off the roof. And.
Is that on the sheet?
Uh, that would be on a sheet, I think, three or four. Grading sheet.
Three or four.
That's well, next one will be grading.
There we are.
So we have a stone diaphragm, a five-foot wide side strip. And vegetated filter strip into, and you see those arrows along there, that's the swell. To the north of the property, we have a BBW and we got the Trump Brook. Which enters into a box culvert right after the, uh, our property line starts right there. So that's why we had to go to conservation, um, it's from their buffer. And, uh, beta reviewed it, this project for. For conservation and we addressed all their comments and concerns regarding the drainage and. And anything else, um. Let's see, going, coming out of tech review, we had a few comments, um, included this letter with the. Response comment letter with the submittal, I can go through those real quick. Um, Mr. Riley from DBW asked to research the. Size of the existing domestic water line. And add that information to the plans. We determined that was a one and a half inch line. And that was probably too small for a fifteen apartment building. So the plan was revised to show a new two-inch domestic water line. Deputy Chief Edward Williams, uh, from Fire noted that most is not allowed up against the building and we're not showing any on the landscape plan for this building. Ms. Raza, I'm saying that right? Uh, stated at the, um, tech review meeting, the, the street parking spaces removed from the plan, which we had done. Uh, so we're not accounting for those as any kind of. Project. Rob May and Deputy Chief Williams noted that the vinyl fence, uh, specifically for the dumpster enclosure previously is flammable. Um, and they asked for more robust dumpster enclosure, so therefore we proposed a heavy wooden fence to be placed as a dumpster enclosure around dumpster. And Brian Creedon, uh, noted that the water, the water connection would be needed and we will need a water permit. Which we will take care of at the appropriate time, um. Received a staff report. As well, and I don't think, uh, there was anything outstanding from, from that report. Uh, pretty much is the overall of the project, if there's any specific questions, uh, we'd more than happy to address them.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mr. Driscoll. Does any of the board members have any? Questions or, or, uh, thoughts they wanna share?
I, I, I love the new design. It's currently, uh, I saw it's gonna enhance that area that's really needed. I think it's a good plan.
I think it is, yeah.
I agree too. I think it's, it's a, we, I've looked at this plan a couple times and, um, I think it's a well-designed plan and I think that neighborhood really needs it, so, um. I, I don't really have any questions.
Uh, do we have, uh, any other comments? Uh, do we have anybody, um, who's the public, anybody?
Uh, anybody in the public would like to comment on this project, please raise your hand so we can recognize you. Again, there is a, uh, raise your hand icon at the bottom of this page if you allow your mouse to hover. Um, over this area.
Mr. Chairman, can may I make a comment?
Yes, please. Yes, Chief Williams.
Just, just on the dumpster enclosure, um, wood will probably burn just as good as plastic. Um, I would recommend, uh, a heavy chain link with slats. Or, um, have them take a look at the nice, uh, concrete block enclosure that they did at, uh, twenty-four. Twenty-seven Pleasant Street, something like that, the one that, uh, Joffrey and Atoli did. It, that's a beautiful dumpster enclosure and it. It's very, uh, attractive to the neighborhood, but just as a suggestion.
Okay, we could certainly, uh, change that on the plan as a condition of approval if there's nothing else that, uh, the board would.
You, you know what that is, Mr. Driscoll? That's the old print shop there across from the fire station. Is that correct, Chief?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
And that's just a suggestion. That's not a condition of approval, but it's a, it's a, it's a suggestion. Apparently, you're referring to some architectural, uh, blockwork, I guess.
So, Mr. Chairman, there are no, uh, hands up from the public, so. You may proceed.
All right. Would someone care to make a motion?
Motion to approve site plan approval, thirty Intevale Street.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with a second, uh. Vote on the roll call, please. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Bob Palagi is a yes. All right, Mr. Driscoll, looks like you're all set.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next agenda item is preliminary subdivision. It's property at fifteen Farrington Street, I think, two lot subdivision. That's JK Holman.
I might have mixed that. No. Um, Phil Nazarela is doing that, I believe.
I'm here as well, Kim.
You are. Okay, where did you go? Where did you go? Oh, you're still on, that's why. Okay.
Is Attorney Nazarela representing?
I'm guessing he is.
He is.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Good evening, Attorney Nazarela.
Good evening, good evening. Uh, I'm here, um, and I would not be without Mr. Scott Faria. Uh, this is a, a piece of property on fifty Farrington Street. Whereby we are looking to subdivide the, uh, lot, which is one of the largest lots on that street. Approximately three times that of the other developed lots, looking to subdivide it into two equal sections. Uh, in being able to build a structure, a residential structure on the one that would be deemed vacant. This is an R-two zone. And I believe that, uh, requirement is seventy-five hundred square feet. We, uh, shot of that, we would be proceeding to the zoning board asking for relief. And I think there are, uh, certainly credible reasons that the zoning board, uh, I would like to suggest would consider this favorably. Once, uh, we have the approval of the, um, the subdivision plan and/or the preliminary plan. Uh, that Scott would lay out at this time. Scott, if you wanna go over that, then I'll just, uh, I'll, I'll come in after.
Sure. Thank you, Attorney Nazarela. Scott Faria, Home苑 Engineering. Uh, Mr. Chairman, board members, as Attorney Nazarela said, uh, a large piece of property, about a hundred forty feet of frontage on Farrington. We're just looking to divide it into two, uh, one lot for the existing home at number fifty Farrington. And then the second lot, Lot B would be for a proposed two-family. Uh, as you can see on the site plan, uh, that Mr. May just brought up, all of the property around us. Is a little bit less in area than us, uh, fifty-five hundred, sixty-eight hundred square feet. And they're all, uh, two-family or larger, uh, residential structures. So our proposal. Uh, fits in with the neighborhood in both density and in lot area. Uh, so as Attorney Nazarela said, just looking for preliminary approval tonight, that'll allow us to go to the Board of Appeals. Uh, Attorney Nazarela will make his case at the Board of Appeals and if successful, we'll be back before you folks, uh, in a few months with a definitive plan.
The only thing, Scott, just to be clear, and Attorney Nazarela, the only you need relief from is, uh. It, it's what, frontage and area on the one lot or just, yeah, front?
Is, yeah, I, I, I was, uh, mistaken. Is, yeah, I, I, I was mistaken in the lot area. My zoning by law says 5,000 square feet for some reason. So I assumed I was okay with lot A having 7,400 square feet. And lot B having 8,000, there's enough area, as Attorney Nazarela said, the zoning is 7,500 for a two family. So the plan that we submit to the ZBA, I'll revise it to go from 7,488 to 7,500. So in that case, our requested relief from the planning board would be the frontage and the width, 100 feet of frontage required, and we have 70 feet.
So that you, I see what you mean. So that you'd although you're, although, I mean, you're R2, you're an R2 zone, but you're used as single family. But I see what you mean. So you could, you could eliminate the request for a zoning relief area by bumping that up to 75.
Right, right. And then just as a point of order, I guess, the existing structure is, as you said, in an R2 zone, but it is a three family. So that would need relief from area to be a three family. It's an existing three family home and is assessed as such. So even though we can give it the 7,500, we'll still be short. I think it then becomes 12,000, I believe, if it's a three family.
Yes.
What about, what about the parking one? What about the parking one, lot A?
They have a, a long driveway that goes off to the left side of the, of the building, Mr. Blodgy. You know, that they, that they use currently that they'll continue to use. But I, I, I don't show it on this plan and it's a, a good point. You're kind of bringing up there. I'll certainly show the individual spaces. Always something the Board of Appeals wants to see. That we have adequate parking. So I'll sure, certainly show that on the ZBA plan and then on the definitive.
And, and to be clear, your house number 50 is an existing three family?
Exactly.
Yeah, you, you might want to note that on the plan as well.
Yes.
I know you're in a, you're in a multi-family zone, but I think it may serve you to note that on the plan so that.
Agreed. I'll certainly make that addition to the ZBA plan.
Well, what do we, what do we think? This is a preliminary plan, so it's not a public hearing. I mean, are there enough revisions there that we want to see a revised copy of this? Or what do the board members think? I mean, packing is, packing is, is a packing is, especially with a three family, packing is a, is a major concern. And if you want to alleviate having to go asking for the relief on your area. I, I think you need to make a couple of revisions there. I think it's basically, I like the size of the lots, but I think you, you need to make some revisions there. That's my thought, but board members, what's your, what's your thoughts?
Are, are they allowed to go to zoning with a revised plan? Or do we need to see it prior to is my question?
You have the ability where the preliminary to pass it on as it exists, deny it or make comment. So you can stipulate what you want to see in the definitive plan. Then would carry over to the ZBA.
I think the, the example that we, we did one with you folks back six, maybe more than six months ago on North Carey Street. With a preliminary plan, we showed a common driveway to service the two lots. You folks approved the preliminary with the condition that if it got to definitive, you'd want to see two separate driveways and separate services and things like that. So we would certainly be happy if you could do that in this case, just to, to get us moving to the ZBA.
I'm fine with doing something like that. I don't know if anybody else has comments.
I would agree.
I'm, I'm okay with that as well.
Okay. So what are the things? So what are the conditions that we're talking about? We want him to demonstrate. He's got a, number one, he's got to label, label the house number 50 as an existing three family. He's got to show adequate functional parking, parking that works for the three family. He's going to adjust, apparently adjust the lot line to, to rebalance the lot areas. What were the other concerns?
I think that was it, Mr. Chairman. I think that was it.
I missed the last part of that. Mr. Chair, was we changing the lot lines or?
Yes, he was gonna, he want, he's going to adjust the areas.
Adjust the areas.
Yep. So that I, if I'm understanding his, he, he's of the belief that he, that will be one less thing he'll be needing for relief from. Is that correct, Attorney?
Yes, correct.
Yep.
And I, I can also assure you, I think those, those criteria you stated, Mr. Chairman, are reasonable, but I can also assure you the items number one and two, identification of the, the, the houses being a three family in parking closely analyzed and examined by the zoning board when we get there as well.
Sure, certainly. Yeah.
Parking is always a very, especially in a street like that, very significant.
Anybody else have any other comments or suggestions? Okay. Who, who's, who's been keeping track of the notes so that they can make them an effective motion?
I'll give it a shot.
Give it, give it a whirl.
Motion to approve preliminary subdivision 50 Farrington Street with the conditions that house number 50 will be labeled as an existing three family, will also show adequate parking. And revision of the lot lines, I might be dropping off a little bit here, but I'm pretty close. There might be a few more words I'm looking for here.
Just adjust the area.
To adjust the area. I don't know if there was anything else.
I have it.
Thank you.
Just lot line area to rebalance lots.
Just lot line area to rebalance lots.
Okay, if it's, if it's, I'm just a question, Pam. So if this plan is approved under those conditions, do, does that plan come back to the planning department or do you, you not see it again?
No, this has to come back as a definitive. Because this is only a preliminary.
Yes, but I understand. But I think, isn't the, isn't the objective here to get before the, utilizing this adjusted plan to get before?
Go to the zoning board. So
This is the zoning.
It would be in, it would be in the letter to, we would send a letter to the zoning board saying that they, they, you'd like to see these amendments to the plan. So
Okay. All right. Motion is, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. A vote on the roll call. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Paul Palagi is a yes. So, very good.
Thanks for the help, folks.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
And let's see, what have we got here? We have, okay, this is the, this is the definitive subdivision. Let me just get caught up here. All right. So the next agenda item, this is a definitive subdivision. It is an 18 lot residential subdivision. It is listed as part of lot 97 Pleasant Street. By W Engineering CLM Development.
I think I've moved all the applicants. Moved. Charlie Macy, Evan and Attorney Burke.
Is there anybody else on your team? Jimmy muted.
I know. We're, we're all set there.
Okay.
Good evening, Attorney Burke.
Good, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
I guess if your team is here, I guess you have the floor then.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Plodgy. I thank you for your assistance and I also think, thank you for your work and professionalism on the planning board. I have the pleasure to represent today Charlie Macy of CLM Development and Evan Watson, engineer with the project known as Amelia Estates. I, I became involved in this real estate approximately three years ago when I was asked to assist on another adjacent subdivision, Cypress Estates, that was being presented by Mr. George Carney. The Carney family also owns this real estate. And it is under agreement with the CLM for a development of, I believe roughly 18 lots. The uniqueness of this particular project again goes back in that there was a substantial amount of community discussion and, and a community outreach before we started to develop this roughly 41 acre site that was owned by the Carney family. That extends from Braymore Road to Cypress and ultimately out through Chilton to Pleasant Street. There was a great deal of concern among the existing Ward One counselor and a number of other individuals representing the neighbors in the Braymore and Cypress area to try to prevent this property and being developed as a cut through street that would roughly run from Tory through to Pleasant Street. So at that time, having taken the the comments and the suggestions of numerous members of the political family of the city of Brockton. We devised the utilization of the property that created roughly three subdivisions. I believe we sat down with the planning department and provided what then was our vision on how to accomplish the development of the property while at the same time squaging the concerns of a number of the elected officials of the city of Brockton. Toward that end, it was suggested that we would roughly develop three subdivisions. First Cypress that came before you as a preliminary plan. And I believe will shortly be before you as a definitive plan in which Ed Jacobs is doing the engineering work. That was brought before the zoning board of appeals. And we received permission for the subdivision with an area that met like this one does. All of the area requirements of the zoning ordinance of the city of Brockton. Plus, at the same time, it had some lots that required a variance from the 175 foot requirement of the zoning ordinance. The next development involves this particular parcel in which we are now seeking also to create an extension of Westbury, I believe, into the 18 lots, which again will meet the requirements of the area width and size of the ordinance. However, there is a shortage of frontage that we'll be looking for waivers. We're also uniquely involved in a process, Mr. Chairman, in which I believe the city is changing their perspective and process and how they want to handle these matters. And as a result, we're filing a definitive subdivision and under the subdivision control law, we're respectfully requesting this board grant relief from the frontage requirement as they are authorized to do under the subdivision control law. We submitted a waiver and I think there's some confusion about that because I, I believe we saw Rice's report earlier today, but I know I, I saw a definitive waiver or request that went with the, the application. And if it somehow got misplaced, we'll be happy to submit it to you. But in that waiver request, among other things, it's requesting this board issue a finding as required under the statute that the particular subdivision as this, that a waiver of the front requirement and the zoning ordinance of the city of Brockton is in the public interest and not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the subdivision control law. A reduction from 175 feet to 125 feet is requested. That in addition to a couple of other waivers, one of which is the length of the cul-de-sac. There has since arisen, since we provided our preliminary materials and submitted to the board some questions now as to the length of this particular cul-de-sac, which may exceed the dimensional requirements authorized under our zoning ordinance and revised ordinance of the city of Brockton. Toward that end, we had a meeting relating to the public safety issues that could arise from that problem. And we were, we were pleased to have the assistance and I, I guess, educational assistance of Deputy Chief Williams in which we sat down and discussed some objective possibilities of relieving concerns about public safety matters. That resulted in our developing a plan that Evan will show you, which provides for continuing access. The potential for continuing access through Cypress so that there would not be any problems related to emergency vehicles, fire, police, ambulance and related. So this is here after we provided notice. I guess on a preliminary hearing, I understand that this is going to be in fact extended and we're going to have a, another form of notice in which the public hearing with the public are going to be invited. But today we're providing you with the information that we have and we have provided to the planning board and others within the city. And we're looking for your assistance and comments. And toward that end, Evan, I'd like you to walk through the subdivision at this time. And also identify the characteristics that required you to provide a request for waivers.
Very good. I may, Mr. Chairman, like to present my screen. Okay with everybody? Can everybody see? Let's see, I think I, I did the wrong thing. One moment. And we can start with this. Does everybody see this Google Earth image here?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to familiarize ourselves with the area. So we know what we're talking about. This is on the west side of Brockton. You see Route 24 and Route 123 Tory Street. And the site we're talking about is situated in between Pleasant Street and Braymore and Cypress. So we're right in here. So the
Does the, let me, let me, let me interject, Mr. Watson. So does this aerial view, does this show the most current developments so that we're, as we're looking at it, does this show everything developed up into real time?
This photograph was taken in October of 2020 and the most recent Chilton Road development is shown here. Yes.
Okay.
And then there's some, a recent thing here. So yeah, up until October 2020, that's how current this is.
Very good. Thank you.
So the, the area that we're looking at, as Attorney Burke indicated, is just the northern property here. So this road was constructed originally with a cul-de-sac. However, there was a provision added here that's not in the residential lot to allow access to this property. And this cul-de-sac is actually provided on easement. So we would expect that this road would be extended. We would have an intersection that would go to the north and would go to the west. I can share.
How do you gain access to that cul-de-sac that's going to lead into that new?
Oh, I can go back. So the access for that, you come off a Pleasant Street and you come down Chilton. It actually breaks off into two roads and then we have the access here. The current owner actually has, has retained property rights to this road and he owns this parcel right here. So we're able to, to do those modifications to tie in.
Does that answer your question, Tony?
Yes, thank you.
I've tried to switch my view to the design plans. Can everybody see the design plan?
Yeah.
Okay. So as such, we've prepared a set of definitive design plans. We've had definitive design subdivision plans, existing conditions plans, grade drainage, pro- We've had definitive design subdivision plans, existing conditions plans, grade drainage profiles and details. To meet your submission requirements. This is the existing plan. Again, we have about seventeen acres we're looking at here. Now let me back up here. So if you look at this property, this shows how Braymore Road ends. Cypress Road comes into the property and Westbury Road comes onto the property. So by right, if we look at the subdivision rules and regulations. And we followed those, the course of action we would likely take would be to take Westbury Road. And extend it down to Braymore Road. And we would also likely come up, develop that and come into Cypress Drive. It's my understanding, and I was not involved in the prop project at that time, but that this was presented to. The planning board and other agencies of the town. To to illustrate how that would go through. It was worked out that this was the best course here. So we divided into twenty lots. Again, if you look at the geometry of the lots, we all meet, we have the shape factor, it's indicated on the next sheets. Where we have the hundred and twenty-five foot width for the hundred and feet, hundred feet back. We do have a couple lots and again, because of the narrow geometry of of this section of the property. In order to get enough area, they do come back a little bit oddly shaped. However, those areas are areas that we're going to be using for drainage, you know, get to that in a moment, so. That shouldn't cause any conflicts with any of the neighboring parties. Here's our existing conditions plan. We had the. Photogrammetrist delivered some topography for the site. So we have a high point of the site up to the west. And everything essentially drains all the way over to the farm property on the east. There is an existing detention basin that comes off of Westbury. And there is an existing garage here. And then you can see some test pit symbols. Charlie and I went out and we did some test pits to take a look at the soil to make sure we didn't have excessive bedrock or. Unusable soils and those all came out well. You can see the results of the test pits here. Then we overlay our design. Were able to take the drainage from just our site. The drainage for Westbury Road is taken all into Westbury Road. All of our drainage, we're going to be picking up and bringing into a new detention basin here. And that will also take all any of the water that's flowing down the hill as well. The existing detention basin, that's on easement from Westbury Road, we'd like to move that. Closer to the edge of the property and that that size to basically. The same size or larger than what's already there. Again, these are just a little more detailed view showing the the grading of the site. And then this indicates the. Detention basis in easement on both sides that would go to the city. And what's nice about that is some of these areas of the lots that get skinny and relatively unusable. We're able to aggregate those together into the easement areas. So that if somebody did put up a fence, they could only put up a fence up to the easement. And you would have, you know, lines of parallel fences running in everybody's backyard. The plans and profiles with the piping all designed. That's these plans. Then we have construction details. We did receive a comment to make some modifications to our typical cross section, which we can easily accommodate. We can do that. One notable item, you'll see that on our plans, we show a. Pressure sewer lateral in in this device here, a pump chamber. That is because if I go back to the overall plan. The existing sewer manhole is about thirty feet higher than most of the the subdivision than this intersection. So I'm unable to get a gravity sewer to to get there, so. We're proposing a private sewer made of pump stations. At each individual home, that would go to a low gravity sewer pipe that would then go into the town sewer, city sewer, excuse me. We did meet with the sewer department. It was their recommendation that we would put the sewer line because it was private under the sidewalk. To make it easier to maintain versus if it needs to be modified and and dig up through the middle of the road. Of course, that's, you know, that was one of the waivers that we were looking for. On the cross section to modify that cross section. But but that can be put wherever it needs to go for certain. I can bring up the the waiver list. So again, streets be no longer than seven hundred feet. So we were hoping to obtain that waiver so that we could make response to the neighborhood. Again, this is a relatively unique property on how it's its size, its shape. Of its narrowness in some areas and how it's accessed on three sides and it's in a, you know, an established neighborhood. And we asked for a waiver for street lighting. Again, we were trying to match what we saw on the neighboring. Subdivision. Oh, I don't think you can see my, I'm sorry. Bring this up. Is the waiver list shown on the screen?
It is.
Okay, thank you. So we, our intent with most of these waivers was to match the subdivision that came in on the abutting property. So I didn't see any street lighting there, so I was asking for that, but certainly we could provide street lighting. The sidewalk, the typical cross section shows sidewalk from the roadway all the way to the right of way. In the neighboring subdivision, it's it's five feet asphalt and then it provides a grass strip. Would still ask, you know, do the granite curving. And then I wasn't sure if fire alarm boxes, if that was still a thing now that we have cell phones and whatnot. I I haven't seen one of those in a while, but certainly if we want to have alarm boxes, we can, we can certainly provide that. The last thing that I'd like to share with you. Attorney Burke indicated that we were working on providing some form of emergency access. So we had a meeting with. Representative from the fire department and we presented to him that we could. Do an easement at a twenty-foot wide gravel access road to connect. The future other projects to Cypress. And to Braymore. And what that would do is essentially address the concerns of. Why we have this requirement for shorter roadways? Because if there's some type of problem that blocks the road and emergency vehicle could get through. This, these easements would also serve to extend the water line. So that would improve the the water pressure for everybody in that neighborhood essentially. And it would be easy to maintain. We'd have a gravel access road and we'd have a gate. We think it's something of this style. And, you know, in Brockton, it's something you probably don't see very often. You know, at twenty. Lots cul-de-sac might not be something that's done all the time. I live in Rainham and, you know, we we have a lot of little subdivisions with cul-de-sacs all over the place, so. This is something that you see on on a dead end road, so we presented some of this information to him. He's taking it under advisement and and reviewing that with his colleagues and we're expecting to hear back from him. As to viability of of such a access.
I was wondering if you could go back and talk a little bit about the. Drainage of the site and how the sheet flow is running down. What is it? West to east, but there is also some issue with how it flows towards. Or if it flows towards Cypress and Braymore.
Very good, so I can certainly do that. If we go to the existing.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Well, that's okay. No, I'm, I'm, thank you, Mr. May.
But here's the existing conditions.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. We're about to lose a member.
How's that?
He has to go to another meeting.
And who would that be, please?
That would be Reggie and it is also his last meeting, so.
Oh, is he still on?
He may have.
I'm sorry.
Are you, are you leaving at this time, Reggie?
If I could, yeah, I'm sorry, I have a trustees meeting at eight fifteen.
Well, the time is at hand. Well, all right, well, thank you and thank you for your participation on the planning board. We really appreciate your time and your effort. Thank you.
Thank you guys, appreciate it. Send you guys an email.
Bye, Reggie, keep in touch.
Take care, guys.
Thank you.
May I continue, Mr. Chairman? We're all set?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. No problem. So if we look at this existing conditions plan, this is something that's. Easy for an engineer to read, but it looks like a bunch of squiggly lines for most people, so I'll zoom in a little bit to describe this. Each one of these lines represents a one foot change in elevation. And these are labeled for every foot, so you can see here we're at elevation two hundred and twenty-three. And the flow of water is going to run perpendicular to these lines, so essentially the water is going to flow down through this way. We have one component of the drainage that does come into the woods to the south. And then the rest of the drainage essentially comes down into the farmland to the east. And we did do. Our roadway will intercept. A lot of the water that actually flows towards the south. And we'll pick it up into the drainage system and bring it into a detention basin, which will slow the. This rate of runoff that comes off the site. So what will end up happening is the amount of runoff, the amount of area that drains to that. Is a property to the south will be drastically reduced. And then where we have impervious area being added, we're taking that into our detention basin. I presented that with calculations. We did do the calculations for that and to show that that all works and that's.
All right. Does that? Does that answer your question, Mr. May?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
All right. Okay, does that, does that conclude your presentation at this time, Mr. Watson?
It does for me. I don't know if Attorney Burke or Charlie has anything else to add, but I'd be.
I'm sure there's a lot more information we'll be providing as this thing rolls along, Mr. Chairman, but I I think that's good enough for tonight.
Yeah, sorry. Well, this was filed, just to be clear, this was filed as a definitive subdivision, was it, Pam?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so it's it's a public hearing and and I'm sure that there's, because it was that, was that habits, it must have been advertised as a public hearing, so. I'm sure there'll be public that want to speak. And as I'm sure that you're aware, I mean, because this is, it's an ongoing process. There'll be a lot of discussion, a lot of deliberations, there's going to be a lot of input. And we we just, we were discussed about outside, outside peer review. I I think it's. I think it's my personal feeling. I think everybody benefits from that. Outside peer review, I think Mr. May and I spoke briefly about that.
That has begun.
Oh, hey, I'm sorry, pardon me, it has begun.
It has begun. He was very proactive.
Oh, thank you. I didn't realize that. Thank you for that correction. I wasn't aware that that's already been. So Beta has that?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
And I think I need to get back in touch with Mr. Macy about some some things, but yes, Beta has started.
Okay, so I I'll kick off the comments. I mean, I I did spend a little time with the plan. So I assume based on the lot shape, I think you use the the. Reference Mr. Watson to some some of the irregular lot shapes. You you're trying to meet or exceed the thirty thirty thousand square feet? Is that what the, is that what the goal was?
All of, yes, all the lots meet or exceed thirty thousand square feet.
So that you would only be asking, in theory, you'd only be asking the zoning board for relief from frontage.
We would like to ask this board for relief from frontage. Maybe, Mr. Burke, you could describe that a little better.
Well, again, Mr. Chairman, that's that's something that I believe the city is in the process of making a change in procedure.
Yeah, it is, it is.
And and that's what we're doing. This is your first trial run. We're we're providing you a subdivision and we're looking for waiver from frontage.
Yeah. And and the waiver thing is a catch twenty-two in the sense that. Because there's so much deliberation, especially when you get into outside peer review. On the, there's so much deliberation and contribution to the discussion, as Attorney Burke knows. From the part of the board members, from the part of the community, the abutters, the counselors. We typically wait until probably the end of the process. To make our decision on waiver waivers because of that reason, because there's so much input, discussionary input. In 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 into shaping the the final, the final. The final decision on the subdivision, so and and I know from, I've been on that side of it, so I know from a. A design standpoint, you'd like to know as much as you can know upfront, but it's kind of a catch twenty-two, but. Anyway, those those were the lot shape, which I. Lot shape, but I think. I appreciate you're trying to, you're you're trying to maintain the minimum thirty thousand, but. I I think that the, well, I can't necessarily, want to be careful not to speak for the zoning board of appeals, but it would appear to me that most recently. The zoning board has been. Let's say open or amenable to lots in the hot, in in the twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand range. Those lot configurations that you're showing. Would would give me some concern. And the other thing is the discussion, the philosophical discussion of. The the length of the road, what constitutes safety, what constitutes access, and the interesting part about that is. Mr. May and I were talking about that today. Every community has a different definition on what is the length of a maximum dead end street, but. Ours is seven hundred nonetheless, so. That's going to be part of the discussion process. Do any of the other board members have any, anything else you'd like to add or kick off, I should say, with your concerns or your comments, questions?
Mr. Chair, it's Larry.
Yes, Larry.
So if. If a waiver was granted on the roadway that they're looking for. Does that, and it's might actually be a question for. Chief Williams too, does does that make a difference with public services and all that too?
How do you, how do you mean, you mean, you mean public?
So now you're extending the roadway. Is this, I mean, it's it's not a cul-de-sac. So there, I mean, it's it's fine for the emergency vehicles to get in there, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
You're talking about that, you're talking about the emergency dirt dirt exit or entrance?
Right.
Yeah. So your question is, does it, would that, would that facilitate the average?
Right.
Family passenger vehicle? I don't know.
Right, which wouldn't, but we're not looking to use that as a throughway road or a or a cut through. We're not looking to extend that, right?
They are not.
Okay, all right.
Could you post the drawings, or or re redisplay the drawings that you did up there, so?
Sure, sure. Is this drawing good or would you like to see the?
That, that, that's fine.
Okay.
So if if I could address the board for just a second. From Pleasant Street to the very end of Westbury is a little over a thousand feet. And then they're going to add another thousand feet of dead end. To this, to this project or to this this road network, excuse me. So on previous subdivisions that have been before the board in the last year, we have had. Members of elected officials concerned about the extension of. Roadways that exceed seven hundred feet or the extension of of dead ends that that exceed a couple, seven hundred feet. And the reason is, amongst other things, is is public safety. Now, if a tree, you know, and and having these easements in between the two properties or the three properties. could certainly alleviate the concern for emergency vehicles. But that then leaves the residents of the area stuck. So if you can see where his hand cursor is right now on the drawing, if a tree were to fall there on Chilton, all of these houses are now trapped, waiting for somebody to come out and get out, you know, and cut down this tree. And that's one of the reasons why we were proposing that the landowner think about creating some sort of interconnection between these three subdivisions. We do not, you know, anticipate that there is going to be a lot of cut-through traffic, simply because it is such a secure this route to get to Braymore or Cypress as opposed to remaining on Rockland. So we had a meeting with the developer. We started talking about this probably a week ago, and that's one of the things that we hope that the board will take under consideration.
So to be, to be clear on your comment or your concern, Mr. May, is the point of your comment that you'd like to see this design go out to Braymore to make a secure this route? Is that what you're suggesting?
If I could share my screen briefly, there are three drawings, or three subdivisions that are being considered. Let me turn on my annotate. There's the current subdivision that's in front of you right now. There is a subdivision off of Cypress, and then a third subdivision proposed, or at least considered, off of Braymore. And what we had suggested that the developer look at is interconnecting rather than, you know, complete dead end. If Braymore then connected to Cypress, Cypress connected to Letty Street, I think is what they're calling it. And then back up to Westbury and out Chilton, it is no longer a straight shot through, kind of like you would find on Rockland Street. It is a bit of a circuitous route for people to try to drive through here. But if a tree does go down here, I have options now if I own a house back here.
I like that. I mean, I appreciate what you're alluding to. If it's doable, I don't know how realistic it is, but I, but I take your point about the, having, having the ability to have options to move about the development.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, the scenario that Mr. May artfully is suggesting, and certainly I understand it, but the key is the public safety access for fire health and safety. The inconvenience access could happen at a five-hundred-foot cul-de-sac. It isn't any different. I believe that you're, at least, we're a little bit in the middle of this, Mr. Chairman, and members of the planning board, because in good faith, we came out and said, how do we do this best for the community? And essentially, the three subdivisions that you're looking at was the answer. And in fact, that was disclosed when we first came before the planning board on Cypress for our preliminary. That was essentially disclosed to the zoning board of appeals when we got approved on the Cypress. And I can tell you as, and again, we're a little bit in the middle of this. As early as today, there were elected officials of the city of Brockton that were reaffirming their lack of interest of having a cut-through street going from Braymore to Pleasant Street. So we're trying to make this work for everybody.
Right. Was that in there, in there requesting that? Was that a little, was that, was that bordering on self-serving, Mr. Burke?
No, I think it's bordering on what they think was best for the community, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, fair enough.
Again, it is at the board's discretion to grant those waivers, not the ZVA.
There's never been any question about that.
Well, Chairman, could I make a comment?
Yes.
I got involved in this a couple of weeks ago, and the city has a seven-hundred-foot length. I found a study done back in two thousand and four of all our one hundred and eighty-one Massachusetts communities. And they ranged, most of them were under a hundred thousand. There were a few that were over a thousand, and I'll send Pam a link. Maybe she can send that out to people. I also started asking around why we have the seven hundred. And nobody could give me a definitive answer, but one of the answers which makes sense is we carry eight hundred feet of large diameter holes, so we could hand stretch it down a street if we had to. And I think that's the case in most places. Over the past couple of years that I've been observing this board, we've kind of stretched that seven hundred feet to fourteen hundred feet, twelve hundred feet. And I don't think I've dug deep enough into it. I've started looking a lot of the cul-de-sacs in the city of Brockton. The, I think the largest one I found so far is eighteen hundred feet. I'm continuing on. And it is a public safety whether we can get apparatus to the other side of any sort of incident. I met with Mr. Burke and Mr. Macy and Mr. Watson and a couple of other people yesterday. They proposed this fire department access road, and I'm in the process of investigating it. I've got calls into the Ranheim Fire Chief to talk to him, how he feels about it. One of my concerns is the maintenance of that road and who's going to take care of it. When we get the twenty-four-inch snowstorm, who's going to plow it? And right now, it will be okay while Mr. Macy has the project ongoing, but once the homeowner association takes over, how are we going to be able to enforce them to do that without having to take them to court or do something of that nature? So the access road, although I'm not a hundred percent against it, it has a lot of questions to be answered so far. And both subdivisions, both Amelia Estates and the one on the other side, need to get together and design that together. And I think they both need to make some sort of presentation together, because once Mr. Macy starts building, we need that road in place. The second item that we were very concerned about is twenty-one hundred feet of a dead-end water main, and how much water we could actually get up to that dead-end water main. And that was a concern. Mr. Burke and his team have graciously agreed to meet up the three proposed subdivisions with an easement so that we can connect the water, so that we'll have free-flowing water throughout the area. So that one, I think we can get taken care of the water. I'm not sold on the access road yet, but this is the beginning of the process, and we work diligently to see what we can come up with.
All right, Chief, thank you. Any other board members or the planning department, any other concerns or? I mean, obviously, that's not something that's going to get resolved tonight, obviously. I, for one, I'll be honest and tell you that I wasn't aware that there was a, as Mr. Burke has alluded, he said that this, that this thing, we're more in the middle of it than the beginning. Can you bring up that conceptual plan again, the one that chose the, the one that chose the penciled-up three subdivisions?
That's not my plan. That, I think, is Rob's.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. So I had no idea, for example, I'll be right up front and tell you that I had no idea that this, I guess you'd call this a concept plan. I didn't know if this concept plan was on the discussion table and that it had gotten any traction. I didn't know that. Can you speak to that, Mr. Burke?
I don't, I don't, I don't know how to describe traction. What I'll suggest to you is that what we did do is we laid out options for the community. And one of the options was a, as of right, traditional subdivision that went from Braymore with cul-de-sacs off of the main road right out to Pleasant Street. That can be done. In fact, I think we would get more lots if that was done. However, that is exactly not what the representatives of the community that we discussed wanted. I can assure you from my hearing before the planning, the zoning board of appeals, when I would say roughly about fifty neighbors from Braymore showed up, and they were finally suggested that, no, Cypress is a cul-de-sac and is not going to connect to Braymore. That's about the only time they were quieted as the meeting dragged on. So this plan, you're right, is a conceptual plan without the interconnections that obviously Rob has identified, he recently added, that was run by various members of the community as an option, as to what could work in terms of an orderly development, a safe development, and not having the impact on one of the more, how would you put it, senior neighborhoods in the community throughout that area. And that's, that's where we are. And when I say we're in the middle of it, we are. We're trying to do the best we can to make the best product we can, and keeping in mind not only public safety, but the ultimate desires of the, what's best for the community. And we, I think we've stepped up because we gave up lots in terms of agreeing to pursue the three-lot subdivision plan that's before you, or at least in theory, what's before you.
All right. Thank you for that expanded explanation. I appreciate that. Okay, well, as we said, it's a work in progress. Do you have anybody at this time? Do you identify anybody, Mr. May, at this time that wants to be on the record?
Um, yes, Mr. John Canova. I'm probably butchering your name, but.
We opening the meeting to public?
Well, it's an advertised public hearing. I thought you said it's a definitive subdivision, which was an advertised public hearing. Do we have a choice on that? If I'm, if I'm out of order, please tell me. I thought, I thought it was.
The city attorney has advised against that because of some issues that may exist with the notification.
Oh, sorry, that's right, okay.
And so we were hoping to have the applicant present and then ask, we have staff and board comments that will go back to the applicant to make future revisions. And then we were going to, she suggested then, when the newer plan comes out and there is a second notification with some better location information that we then reopen and take public testimony.
Okay, fair enough. Yep, thank you for that. Okay, again, are there any other comments from the part of the planning board? You've seen what the proposal is and you've heard the discussions. Again, it's an ongoing process.
I do think we need to see a second entrance for public safety, for fire trucks, et cetera. But I remember, is this the area where there's three houses on Pleasant Street and the development was developed behind them and there was water drainage?
Yes.
That is the same area.
So has all, because this is not my forte, so, Mr. Chair, it's yours. Has the water drainage been addressed so that?
Yes, that issue that unfortunately came up at that planning board meeting, I know the one you're meeting you're talking about, that was, that was the developer that developed those streetfront lots, lots along Pleasant Street, and he has since addressed those issues, and that's been quieted, yep. Yep. But that's, but to your point, this development is behind that. It's actually behind the cul-de-sacs that the engineer outlined, behind that, those three houses.
And could it add to or create further issues for the, those three houses that are on Pleasant?
Well, assuming the post-instruction runoff is addressed, as Mr. Watson has suggested, I would suggest not, but I mean, that's a question for, that you'd have to ask. He's not even aware of what we're discussing, but I assume that he'll, I mean, in development, you have to be held responsible not to negatively impact on a budding landowner. I mean, that's, he'll be held to that standard, so.
Okay.
Yep. Well, if there's no other comments, concerns, questions, and again, I'm sure we're going to learn more as the, as the outside peer review, that would be Beta, develops his comments and his concerns, the board and the public is going to learn more. So it's a process.
I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, what probably would work for us, if you continue it to a date certain, that provides enough time to do whatever the planning board thinks it needs to do for publication notice.
Certainly. Yes, and that's publication, because it's going to be, it's going to be, but we don't know.
Will we play, will we run the legal? And you're going to have to re-notify abutters.
I've already talked to the city solicitor, and I'm not sure I am, because we provided sufficient notice. But I'm happy to work that out. I'm happy to provide a regular mailing.
I believe that was discussed, regular mailing.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that for the board. It, Mr. Chairman, there was a huge number of certified mailings that went out in this particular process.
Yeah, in the radius of notice, yeah.
Yeah, right. So, yeah, what we'd like to do is, we'd like it continued to a date certain, and then give everybody sufficient time to be able to work around that date.
Sounds good. The question, do we know, can we ballpark, how long, how long is Beta going to take? In order to have an effective next meeting, I'm going to respectfully suggest that you'd want to have at least something from Beta.
Oh, I, we want a productive meeting, so I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, right. I mean, if we're talking, it's now early April, if we're talking the middle of May, I think that would be sufficient.
The June meeting?
Because you've just begun your.
Looking at the June meeting?
You've got, you're on, technically, you're on your, does his, Pam, do you know, or Rob, do you know, does the original filing with the city clerk, does that start his time clock of the one forty-five days?
It does.
It does, yeah.
Okay, so you're only, you've only spent roughly, I think you're stamped in the beginning of March, so you only spent thirty days.
I'll speak for the client here, and he can shoot me later. Yeah, I think the June meeting is probably, makes a lot of sense. It'll give the operative time for Beta to have a detailed analysis, and more importantly, Evan to respond to some of that analysis, so that we may have a revised plan coming into the board for the meeting.
And realistically, as we all know, you may, you may find, you may be in a spot where you may have to ask for a continuance, which is pretty much.
It's been done before.
It's been done before. Yes, it has. All right, so we're going to, we have a continuance until June. What is the date of the June meeting, please, Pam?
June first.
June first. There you go.
I do want to make an announcement, though, that we have some people who have been sending Q and A questions, and we've been trying to answer them as we go. And I am trying to figure out how those are saved.
Is it appropriate, Mr. May, to just to put a message out to the general public that we'll be open at the June meeting? It'll be open to public comment at the June meeting?
Yes, and I have notified some people that that this will be available for public comment at that time.
Okay. Well.
But this is the, this is the advice of the city solicitor, so I don't mean to throw her under the bus, but I just.
For everyone writing these questions and wanting to be heard, you can be heard at that meeting, so you're not being ignored. You will be heard.
The meeting is not closed.
Right, just so they understand.
Okay, well, if there's no other comments or discussion for tonight, if someone wants to make a motion to continue this project to the June first meeting.
I'll make a motion to continue this project to the June first meeting.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded. Vote on the roll call. We don't, we no longer. Vote on the roll call. We don't, we no longer have Reg. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
And Bob Pelagi is a yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Okay, that's the last agenda item, so the, the last thing of business is the reorganization of the board. As you know, Reggie has now left, and this will be my last meeting, so. We, that lead, that will leave, and I'm, just for the record, my, my, my letter of resignation continues through, I think it, what was it, Pam, through Thursday or Friday? And I did that intentionally so that if you needed me to sign any plans, I didn't know if you needed any plans that were coming out of this meeting.
Um, there probably are, but unfortunately, I'm in Florida, so.
Okay.
Anything that needs to be typed will need to wait till I get back.
Wonderful. All right, well, then that's, we tried. Okay, so.
So, you know, you can come by and sign it then.
Well, I'll be, I'll.
It'll be dated for the date of this meeting.
I'm sorry?
They'll be dated for the date of this meeting.
Okay, very good. Okay, so we're back before us now is the reorganization of the board. So there's three, there's four active members here tonight. So we need to, I guess, first of all, nominate a future chairman of the planning board. And with someone, I think this, there was a candidate that was suggested. So if someone.
Because you're leaving us, Mr. Chair, I did throw my hat in the ring for the position. Certainly will never fill your shoes, but I am on the table for the position.
Okay, so Tony Gonzalez is, is a candidate. She's introduced herself into nomination as a candidate. Is there anybody else? All right. I guess, if there's nobody else, I guess we can close the nominations for, for chairman. I guess now we can go to vote. Vote on the roll call. So Larry Hassan?
Definitely, yes.
That's, that was a definitely yes. That was, that was emphatic.
She stepped up, so definitely, yes, I support her.
Well, I like that. And I'm sure she appreciates your support. Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie, not Reggie, pardon me, James Sweeney?
Yes.
And Bob Pelagi is a resounding yes. And I personally think that I congratulate you and applaud you for stepping up to do that, Tony. I think you'll make a great chairman.
First female chairperson.
Yeah, woman, chairperson.
Yeah.
First female.
First female chairperson of the Brockton Planning Board. This was made. And typically, from my, if memory serves, I think that we generally appoint, I don't, you call it a vice chair, or what, what was the, was it a vice chair, or was it a?
Coach chair?
How about acting chairman? Because you're going to need.
We have a, we have a clerk, and the clerk serves as vice chair.
Okay, so who would like to be the clerk?
Larry.
Larry.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
I know you're busy. That was a great nomination, so I think nominations are close.
Pam can't nominate anybody.
I can't nominate. I was just suggesting.
Oh, she was, Pam was just trying to, well, she was just trying to help out.
Dying to hear what Rob's trying to say.
There is another position that we need to fill, and that is the representative on the VBA.
Right, but, and I was going to get to that, Mr. May.
Right, but it, it's just in my, I'm not nominating anybody, but we might want to have someone with a little more experience and understanding of the zoning board to serve in that position as opposed to someone who is a rookie, even though he has a full head of hair.
Who did you have? Okay. All right, so can we, can we, all right, can we finish with the clerk then? Larry, I, I think someone, I, it was very soft, but I think someone nominated you as clerk.
Second.
And that position entails what?
Reading the agenda and managing the meeting if the chair is not available.
Tony's missing.
Fine, I, I accept.
Let the record show. So he's been nominated, he's been duly nominated as, as clerk. Vote on the roll call. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
That was not a resounding yes. Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
And Bob Pelagi is a yes. So we have a new, we have a new chair and a new clerk. Congratulations. And now we need a representative to the zoning board of appeals. Everybody understands what that entails, right? And didn't you, wasn't, wasn't, didn't you have a situation where you were splitting it between two, Pam?
I was, and the zoning board was happy with that. Well, it was Larry and Tony that were, was splitting. You did a month, Larry did a month, Tony did a month.
Is that still good with Tony and Larry?
That was, that was a temporary plan because a former, our former board member is no longer with us. So that, that was a temporary plan. We need a permanent candidate for the zoning meetings.
And ideally, you're right. Ideally, we need one person as a liaison between, from the planning board to the zoning board of appeals. But as you can tell, that's kind of a difficult task, or a difficult, a difficult request.
Are we at this point too, technically short, a planning board member?
We are too short, yeah.
You are technically too short. At this point, if you could agree to.
Alternate?
You're doing the next meeting, right?
Yes, yes, so if we're going to suggest that we continue to rotate and throw Mr. Sweeney into that rotation until we have two additional board members. And then from there, we'll see who's interested in the strongest candidate and vote from there. That sound good?
I'm okay with it. I missed that.
You want to just go with that concept? There's no point in, there's no point.
I mean, you can leave them unfilled at this time and wait until the board is filled and then just, he would be the applicant for the May.
Okay, and, and obviously, it goes without saying, the mayor is well aware that he's got two open spots on planning.
Correct.
I think he's got, I think he's got one or two open spots on alternates on zoning anyway, but.
And I did chat with the mayor yesterday briefly, just saying, you know, what a huge loss it is to lose you, Mr. Chair, and that we do need a candidate with someone, someone with your background and knowledge and skill. So we need to work together to find somebody that can come halfway close to you.
Someone, someone had passed an ordinance, and I forget, this goes back in the, in the, in the roles and rosters of the city council. And it was a well-intended ordinance, but they, it's, you're supposed to have a registered person. I believe it's on the, on the planning board, either registered engineer or registered landsaver, and that's, you know, an easy thing to request. It's not so easy to fill. It's just, it's just, it's just not an easy thing to fill, so.
Right.
Yep, but that's, ideally, that was, that was the, that was the goal. That was the, that was the goal. But in any case, I, I will say congratulations and good luck to the planning board. I, I, hopefully, I've made a contribution. I've enjoyed my time. It's interesting how these things come about, because when I first gone on, I, my first, my first, I would just say, attraction was to the zoning board of appeals, because I was before the zoning board of appeals quite a bit in my workdays. And I always liked the function of the zoning board. And I remember then Mr. Mayor Carpenter said, I'll put you on the zoning board. He said, but we need, we need a couple of open spots on the planning board. And he said, I'll put you on the zoning, but I got to have you on planning. And I said, well, I just want you to know, I want to go on the zoning board. So the best they had was an alternate on the zoning board, which I just resigned from. And I went on the planning, and then at that time, Dave Wheeler was the chairman. And I said, well, Dave's the chairman, so I'll be the vice chair and this and that. And then, as you know, the rest of the story, he abruptly left, and that's how life is. I mean, you, it ends up that I was the chair, which no regrets, don't get me wrong. But it's just how, it's how life works. But anyway, I've enjoyed it, and I wish all of you the best. And I appreciate everybody's contribution. We have to keep in mind that we're, you know, unpaid, uncompensated public servants. And it does take time out of your day, especially if you've got young families, and especially if you're working full-time. So the city appreciates it. I know the, you know, the, the mayor's office appreciates it as well. So thank you for your cooperation and your, and your attendance. Yes, Mr.?
Bob, as soon as we are all vaccinated, we will have cake.
Oh, I love that idea. I like it.
I'm half vaccinated.
I'm fully vaccinated.
And Bob, I just, Bob, I just wanted to say too, that I really, really appreciate what you've done over the short time I've been here on the board and, and, and I, what Tony was saying too, based on your knowledge and experience of being able to have to read plans and have the discussions with the applicants and other members of the city. Goes without saying, it's, it was a huge benefit for me to follow along with that, because I, you know, there are some things I can understand and read, but nowhere near or close the, the, you know, what you brought to the table. So we're going to miss that. But I appreciate the new chair, the new member, James Sweeney, and the new chair, Tony. And a lot of the work, obviously, that rise, and Rob and Pam, and obviously, what Chief Williams has done too with his board. Without this group, we wouldn't get half of the stuff done, so.
I mean, that's, that goes without saying. You've got a great, well, first of all, let me say, thank you for the comments. Give yourself some credit, because I've watched you, all of you, and you, you, you're getting a little bit more confident. You're making your comments and you're reading the plans better. And yes, you've got a great support staff there. So it's, it's going to help that support staff is going to see things that you may not see. It's just the nature of the process, so consider yourselves fortunate that you've got them. So with that, I guess we'll see you around the block, as they say.
I sure hope so.
Have a great, and good night. I'll miss you guys too. It's become, you know, it becomes a part of your life.
Oh, we'll talk.
Yeah.
We'll talk.
I know where you live, too.
We've got some, the good news, going forward, you've got some interesting projects ahead of you. That certainly is one of them. I, I like what we did on Thatcher Street. I think Thatcher Street resolved itself well. There's certainly some other ones that I think that we, because of the contribution that we made as a board, I think we made, we had, we had a good end result, so that's what you want. That's what, that's what the function of the board is. And as I say, you've got a great support staff there to get you through it. So with that, have a great evening. I'm sure we'll, we'll be talking to all of you.
Thank you, Bob.
All right.
Good night.
Have a great night. Thank you, Chief.
Somebody needs to move to adjourn.
We'll make the motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and, and seconded to adjourn. The meeting is adjourned.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.